I'll have to call this meeting of the Town Planning Board to order. If anyone will please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. The minutes of May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four will be deferred to a later date. We'll start with the minutes for October third, two thousand twenty-four. Do we have any comments or revisions? Uh, page one. For the uh, line started with engineer Higgins gave a brief summary. First building permit, it was determined that the uh, it's repeated twice, it's two words, that the. And then, in that same paragraph, it looks like perhaps there's a couple of words missing. Positioning of the dwellings on the lots, I open to approval. I'm not sure what was intended there.
What was the?
It says, so in accordance to the town regulations, the setback requirements, the positioning of the dwellings on the lot, I open to approval. Is that is open to, or is there something else that belongs there? Subject to, open to, I'm not sure.
Was subject to approval by the planning board.
Subject to?
Yes.
And finally, on that one. Let's see which. Top of page three. This sentence started from board members' life. What is the intention of trail buffer? Then we have engineer Higgins right after that.
Page three.
Page three.
Uh huh.
It says, there's a note on the plan that states that the fifty-foot bumper strip, and it must be left in place. Something's missing there.
Must it, must be left in place.
Okay. Do we have other comments or revisions on this one? If not, can I have a motion then to approve the minutes of October third, two thousand twenty-four as modified?
I'll place a motion.
Diana, second by?
I'll second.
Marty, all in favor, say aye.
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 And I abstain.
I abstain too.
We have two abstentions, Eric and myself. Next set of minutes would be for December fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Only comment I have is in the very first line as far as the deferment of minutes. November seventh, I believe should say November twenty-first. Other revisions, comments? None, okay? In that case, can I have a motion to approve the minutes as modified?
I'll place a motion.
Diana, second by Eric, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I abstain. I was not here. Next minutes are for December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Comments or revisions? Not, can I have a motion to approve the minutes as prepared?
I'll make my motion too.
Marty, second by?
I'll second.
Seamus, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Barry, he pluses of leach fields, it should say pluses off leach fields and leach is L E A C H.
I'm sorry.
Page six. This is for the student bus company project. He pluses off. That's the only one, it's just those two words. Other comments or revisions? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as modified? Seamus, second by?
I'll second.
Diana, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? One abstention, Eric. Next set of minutes, February twentieth, two thousand twenty-five.
All right, I'm ready.
This isn't your fault it was on the agenda wrong, so it got carried over wrong. This is on page three for Uniplank. It says, we were here for the revised plans and the draft agenda.
I carried that over?
Yes, you did.
That's Sean's fault. I just really wanted to point out that he made an error and I wanted to.
I just wanted to see if we were reading.
But the funny part is she told me about it before the meeting.
I did, I tried to help him save face.
Okay.
And he didn't even review my notes.
I'm sorry. Any other revisions, comments? Can I have a motion then to approve the minutes of February twentieth, two thousand twenty-five as modified? Seamus, second by?
Yep.
Neil, all in favor, say aye. Against?
Abstain.
One abstention, Marty. Last one, March sixth, two thousand twenty-five. Comments or revisions, this was our last meeting. Frank, were you here on that one? Our last meeting.
I don't think I was.
I don't think so either. That's my change.
Yeah.
The name should be scratched.
That's it.
Okay. Other comments or revisions? If not, can I have a motion then to approve the minutes as modified?
I'll make it.
Neil, second by?
Second.
Uh, turn around. Wow, thank God. All in favor, say aye.
I abstain. Abstain, abstain.
Same, same.
Well, yeah, abstain, abstain, abstaining?
Yeah.
You're abstaining too, so we can't approve this one?
Yeah, okay.
We don't have a forum for this one.
Right, we'll do that next time.
So we carry it over. Okay.
We appreciate the second question.
Next item on the agenda. Possible extension or abandonment of applications pursuant to town code. First one is Alturis Solar LLC, Nexamp Solar LLC. And we have a letter here dated February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Dear members of Town, Goshen, Town Board and Planning Board. Nexamp Solar and its wholly owned subsidiary, Alturis Solar LLC, ask that the town of Goshen please consider an extension to its formerly issued site plan approval through September of two thousand twenty-five. Due to delays in the landfill cap repair preventing Alturis Solar from commencing its formal work, special permits were extended through May of two thousand twenty-five and late of two thousand twenty-four, and we're seeking a similar extension of the site plan. Following the board's approval in May, two thousand twenty-three, Nexamp proceeded to further diligence, to further diligence, to further diligence the project and pursue in New York State D E C approvals throughout the balance of two thousand twenty-three. On January twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, the D E C issued a conditional letter approving the installation of Alturis Solar following completion of the cap repair by Alturi and its subsidiaries. In the following months, Nexamp consulted with Alturi to secure sources of funding for the cap repair, evaluate contractors and establish a scope of work that would sufficiently address all of D E C's concerns and requirements. The process of consulting with Alturi to address some of the issues above proved to be more labor intensive than anticipated. Funding was secured in May of two thousand twenty-four and contract agreements to cap repair execution have been executed as of June, two thousand twenty-four. Negotiations around financing of the cap repair delayed the start several months, but repairs have commenced and fill import will conclude in April of twenty-five, at which time we should be in a position to pull permits and move forward with construction through the balance of two thousand twenty-five. In light of these challenges and our persistent efforts to further the project in the face of several delays, we hope that the board will consider an extension to the site plan approval issued to Alturis Solar, allowing these approvals to be extended through May, two thousand twenty-five. Nexamp and its partners expect to commence construction in late summer, early fall, but given the delays suffered by this project to date, additional time is required to ensure subsequent extensions are not needed. We thank the boards for their consideration, welcome any conversation needed to further clarify the circumstances surrounding this project status. Signed by Ryan McKune, Vice President, Business Development, Nexamp Solar. It took longer to read this than it would take them to pad that.
September fourth.
September fourth. Anything on this?
Uh, yeah, Kelly answered one of those, they're only asking for an extension till May, I would recommend going out the six months just for consistency with your other applications. Also, this will be your final extension, we'll let the applicant know that, it sounds like they anticipate getting everything done by, you know, in May, wrapping it up, but just in case something else goes wrong with your schedule, you just want them to be aware that this is.
That's fine. Comments from the board?
None.
Not, can I have a motion then to approve the extension to September fourth, two thousand twenty-five? We have Marty, second by Eric, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
I'm recused.
One recusal, okay. Next one is Hamiltonian Park, Section F. We have a letter dated March third, two thousand twenty-five from Gori Consulting Engineers addressed to the Planning Board regarding Section F. Just to the Chairman and Planning Board members, the subject application for a major subdivision approval was granted conditional approval in September, two thousand twenty, and most recently issued an extension in September, two thousand twenty-four. At this time, the applicant is requesting an additional six-month extension to allow the applicant to address meeting the various conditions of approval. The applicant has retained my firm to complete this project and obtain final approval. We are, we are the third firm retained for this purpose since the applicant acquired the project. Engineering work on this project was halted when the prior firm, Lang and Tully, became the town engineer. We have not had time to complete the work necessary to obtain the final approval of the project. Signed, Richard Magouy, Engineer. Sean.
Two things, first, I just want to clarify for the board that it's conditional preliminary approval, and also Mr. Magouy is here with the applicants, attorney, in case you want to hear them now.
And this would be till September fourth.
This, this is conditional preliminary?
Yep.
Was there anything you wish to add to what was written in the letter?
No, thank you.
Okay.
It's probably the easiest meeting I've ever been to.
We tried. Comments from the board? If not, then could I have a motion to extend the conditional preliminary approval to September fourth, two thousand twenty-five for Hamiltonian Park, Section F? Seamus, second by?
I'll handle.
Seconded by Seamus again, no. Eric, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
I'm recused.
Neil is recused, okay?
He's recused on all four, just so he doesn't have to be.
Thank you.
Next item is all in audio, eleven Girder Lane. A letter from Katania Mahoney Ryder, Attorneys at Law, dated February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Just to the Planning Board, request for extension of conditional approval, all in audio. Dear Chairman and Members of the Planning Board, we represent all in audio, the connection to the redevelopment of the above referenced project, uh, property, I'm sorry. On March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four, the Planning Board adopted an amended resolution of conditional approval, which modified, removed some conditions to allow multiple dwelling units, housing for agricultural workers in buildings seven, nine, and ten, as shown on the plan referenced in the amended approval. On September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, the Planning Board extended the amended approval until March sixth, two thousand twenty-five. Since copies of site plan were not yet submitted to the Planning Board for stamping and signing, the applicant seeks another six-month extension of the amended approval to allow more time to submit copies of site plan for stamping and signing. In accordance with the amended approval, the applicant has up to eighteen months to comply with all the conditions and obtain the necessary building permits. In addition, the applicant seeks a six-month extension of the special permit since it has not completed the conditions of the approval within the twelve months. The subject property is located within town's flood plain and ponding area overlay districts, and the proposed use trigger is special permit. We continue to actively work on the conditions of the amended approval. One of the conditions of the amended approval involved approval of the septic system by the Orange County Department of Health. A re-submission was made to the Department of Health in December of two thousand twenty-four, and we expect a response by the end of February, two thousand twenty-five. In addition, the D E C is reviewing an application for a speedies permit modification associated with the septic system. A submission to the D E C was made in early December. Given the above, we ask the Planning Board grant an extension of the amended approval. The applicant has been diligently working on completing all the conditions of the amended approval, but needs some more time. Neither the proposal nor surrounding circumstances have changed since March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Please kindly place this on the Planning Board's next agenda so the Planning Board can discuss this minor request. In the interim, feel free to contact me with any questions or comments. Very truly yours, Sean W. first. Sean.
I don't have anything for this one, Mr. Chairman.
September eighteenth.
What's that?
September eighteenth.
Comments from the board?
No comments.
No comments, can I have a motion then to approve the extension to September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five for all in audio? Request for conditional approval extension, eleven Girder Lane.
I'll make the motion.
Marty, second by?
I'll second.
Diana, all in favor? And one abstention?
I'm recused.
You're recused. Two, uh, two, two.
Recusals.
Two refusals. Recusals. No refusal, recusals, okay. I'm twisted here.
Yep.
Okay, and the fourth one, pursuant subdivision. Letter from Pitchazak and Fau dated February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, addressed to the Planning Board. Please let this letter serve as our request for a ninety-day extension of final approval for the above referenced project. Phase two of the project was recently filed, and we are now finalizing the plans for phase three. Should you have any questions or require anything further, please don't hesitate to contact our office. Very truly yours, Vincent Pitchazak. Professional dancer there. Pitchazak and Fau. Sean.
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
September fourth.
Comments from the board? Can I have a motion then to approve their request to September fourth, two thousand twenty-five for the extension of the final approval for the project? Eric, second by?
Second.
Seamus, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And one abstention, okay.
Mr. Chairman, you notice how the letters from the engineers are short and sweet, no one from the attorney or.
I mean, detailed and thorough, I do see that.
I did notice that, yes.
And you are welcome on behalf of multiple.
Next item on the agenda is Golden Stadium Primrose Realty LLC, twelve dash one dash fifty-six. We have an application for a site plan and special permit for lodging facility on eight point six plus or minus acres along New York State Route seventeen N and H C C O zone, eight Q six overlay, and we're here to discuss a part three E A F.
I'm recused on this.
Okay, thanks, Neil. Yes. Charlie, behind you, Tony.
Welcome. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Planning Board members, how are you? For the record, my name is Michael Morgante, I'm the project engineer for this application. It's been a while since we were here last. There's quite a few new faces actually in the board, it seems, from the last time we were here. As the board's aware, we're looking to propose a lodging facility on the site, and the last time we were here, we had gone through a part two E A F, and identified some important items to take a look at as it relates to this project. One of those most important items we need to take a look at was water supply for this particular project. I will introduce Mr. Tom Cuzak at this point, but I'll go over the project a little bit more in detail, but he'll be here tonight to discuss the water supply portion of this, which I think is probably one of the most important features to discuss tonight with the board. So, we received that part two E A F, we went through it, we provided a part three expanded E A F for the board's consideration, your consultants reviewed that document, they provided comments back to us, we take no exception to the comments that were provided to us. That being said, we will be looking forward to preparing a SWIP, more detailed documents, we'll work with the traffic comments that we received to try to clean up some of those items. We'll include some of those documents again as part of the revised expanded E A F that we'll provide back to the board. So as it relates to those specific items that are site plan related and whatnot, there's no exception, and we will again address those comments. So at that moment now, I probably should introduce Mr. Cuzak, he can go over the water stuff, and then we can discuss with the board any other comments or considerations you have.
Thanks, Michael.
Good evening, Tom Cuzak from W S P. Vice President, Senior Hydrogeologist. I'm here tonight to discuss the results of the pumping test that was conducted at the site in October of two thousand twenty-four. The pumping test program that was implemented was approved by the board, it was the last time I was here. We, the approved water demand for the project by Orange County D O H is twelve gallons a minute, we conducted the test at fourteen gallons a minute. You have a copy of the report, but it was a pretty standard pump test event. We demonstrated the stabilization criteria. We also did a hundred eighty-day projection, which basically takes the water level trend in the last six hours of the test and projects it out over a hundred eighty days, and assumes no recharge during that event, and that analysis was also favorable.
On that question, while you're on that topic, with that hundred eighty-day drawdown extension, you had ninety percent recovery before you got into that one. Would there be any concern with any of the neighboring wells over the course of that hundred eighty days that would alter that projection?
Right. Well, that projection is based on the pumping water level, it's applied to the pumping well, it's not applied to off-site impacts, but I can discuss that next. As promised, when I got the plan approved, there was some concerns about recharge to the site, in addition to potential offset impacts, and we promised to conduct a very robust off-site well monitoring program. You know, typically it would have been about seven wells, but we did fourteen off-site wells, sorry. And that off-site program was also approved by the town prior to implementation. I personally solicited the homeowners, I hadn't done that in a while. So, the off-site well monitoring program, so it basically consisted of, we had one, the original well for the property, we monitored that, and the pumping well, of course, and then the fourteen off-site wells. Basically, we pumped twice the average water demand of the project for seventy-two hours, which is, you know, to keep it simple, stresses the aquifer, because under normal operation for the hotel, it's not going to pump three days straight, you know, you'll have intervals where the, where the well will not be pumping. But the requirement is to demonstrate twice the average water demand. We had very little offsite impacts. We're talking about two feet, one point two feet, no non-detect, which is really insignificant. The only impact that we saw in the twenty-foot range was on five test wells located on the Trevoli site, immediately adjacent to the study parcel. Those are test wells, they're not, they're not in use. We had no, we installed physometers in the wetland features on site, we had no, it was no hydraulic interconnection from the groundwater withdrawals from the bedrock aquifer onto the very limited small onsite wetland features. And we collected the parameters required for this project by Orange County, and all parameters meet drinking water standards. So that's a, you know, a redetized version of the test, it went very well, in my opinion. Bob's here, he wrote a comment letter, he, my understanding is he concurs with our conclusions.
Thanks, Tom.
Sure, yeah, I can start, and then I can turn it over to Bob Miller, who you recall as your town hydrologist.
Yes.
So this is an expanded part three, so you're evaluating impacts if they're identified in the part two. The applicant indicated earlier that they take no exception to any of the town consultant comments, in addition to my comments, John Cannon, the town's traffic consultant, filed a memo. The only item that I really have given the applicant to comply is in terms of visual impacts, whether the board is going to require any view shed analysis or anything like that. If you are meeting that way, then I think the next step for the applicant relative to that potential impact is to prepare a view shed analysis for you and identify vantage points for which to take photographs and possible arrangements. They're not prepared, obviously, to do that tonight, but that would be the next step before they come back with a revised part three, in my opinion.
Thank you. Going through the part three, one item was just mentioned, the waste water treatment facility, that the review would be done by the Orange County Department of Health, that's incorrect, it would be the D E C.
I agree with that, our, our project planner wrote that. I didn't pick it up when I reviewed it, but I concur, it's, it's a D E C permitted.
Yep. Action. Bob, how would you like to, yeah, on our note letter?
Yeah, so I reviewed the project that W S P did, and let me say that they went, did a nice job, in my opinion, with the monitoring that they did of all the neighboring wells, and I don't disagree with their results. My only issue with the report is, is that my opinion is, is that when a report is presented to the Planning Board, it should be a standalone report that anyone else can take and look at and either agree or disagree with. When I looked at the report, they, and Tom alluded to this, they said that they met the health department's requirement for stabilization, but the number for stabilization was never given. So, they may have met it, but it needs to be in the report. There are a couple other things in my letter that I think the report probably should go back, be rewritten and resubmitted, so that you have a document on file that's representative of what actually was on, went on out there, and it supports the results, so that somebody can take a look at it and say, oh, this is how much water they're required, they more than doubled it, this was the actual number, this is how they actually got to that pumping rate. Something that Tom didn't say that we normally do is we take a look at the water levels and the surrounding wells prior to the pumping, during the pumping, and after the pumping. in the surrounding wells prior to the pumping, during the pumping, and after the pumping. And we take a look at the drawdown in the normal use of those wells. If we see during the pumping period that drawdowns are increasing for any individual well over that time period, then we can say there's probably going to be an effect on this. Because we see drawdown in a well during pumping, we would expect that. In this particular case, we didn't see that. We saw no effect on the other wells that Tom's group monitored. So I'm in agreement with, with the results that were given.
So, so you're basically saying the results were good, but the presentation should be tweaked in such a way that more user-
I, I know that he didn't write the report because I've reviewed stuff that Tom's written personally, so I know he didn't write the report, but he knows what I'm looking for and what the town would be looking for.
In this way, for the layperson, they would understand.
Yeah, we have no problem with, we-
That way you have a record on your, so if anybody comes to you and says, how did you make this decision with this report when it doesn't even say what this was?
What the baseline of standards is.
What the standard is, it's all there.
And we know now. Bob's going to be reviewing stuff, so now we know. We know what he wants, and we're happy to provide it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Can I ask?
Oh, by the way.
Yeah. So with respect to the Tivoli wells, the applicant mentioned that there is, what, 20?
About 20 feet, yes.
Is, is that in your, I realize there's nobody on the property right now, but there is property owner. Is that, in your view, significant, insignificant?
Well, I, I wouldn't-
Let me, I'll update, maybe you don't, I'll, I'll update him on the situation. So they were test wells drilled for a proposed project.
Okay.
I, I don't think the application is current in front of the planning board. But I can tell you, when they did their pump tests, we had over 100 feet of drawdown on our well. So in my opinion, professional opinion, the proposed build-out plan, the aquifer will not sustain the proposed build-out plan. I mean, 100 feet is a, is a lot. And I sent Sean my review of the pump test, their pump test, and, you know, called out 100-foot-plus a drawdown, which, like, it's not chasing now, but they, they completely dismissed the overall impact. They, they missed it on the hydrograph.
100, 100-foot of drawdown from-
Their pump, yes.
Their static level down to a pump level.
Yes, we had over 100 feet. So what happened?
How much, what, what kind of column was remaining in the way?
So you'll understand this. So they set a transducer on, in our well, right? And they set the transducer at, let's just say, 100 feet from top of casing.
Okay.
So probably 40 hours into the test, the water level dropped below the transducer. So I'm saying 100-plus feet of drawdown. And I'm very comfortable in saying, you know, that the proposed ground, the proposed build-out is not sustainable by the aquifer.
And you're talking about the proposed build-out of both proj-
No.
Combined projects or just Tivoli?
Just Tivoli, yeah.
What rate were they pumping at, Tom, do you know?
Uh, I think somewhere around maybe like 70, 80-ish, you know, with the best well out.
Okay. So if, if there was a project on the Tivoli land that was sort of more normalized in terms of demand, would, would the Golden Stay project and sort of a normal project on the Tivoli land be incompatible with each other?
No, because they, this project likely get approved first, so when they come in, they, just like, just like when we came in, any existing users have to be protected. Lee would understand that.
No, I, I, my question is, are they being protected, basically?
Who?
The Tivoli landowner. I'm asking if the 20 feet that we're describing is a big deal. That's all.
Uh, well, they're for test wells, but they're for, they're for-
Their, their drawdown is 100. It was 20 when they were pumping the Primrose wells. Their drawdown is 20 on Tivoli.
Right, no, I understand that. I'm, I'm asking if that, if that result is a negative result for the Tivoli landowner.
Well, it is only in terms of what he proposes to do on the property.
Right, yes.
So if it's, if it is a, if it is a project with sort of more normal demand?
Yes.
It's not incompatible?
Remember, this test that was done is going to be twice the average day. So they're, and they went beyond twice the average day. So technically, theoretically, the drawdown might have been 10 feet in that well. Now, whether that's going to be significant for those five wells, it would depend on what they propose.
Right.
And how much, you know, what their yield would be, what they're going to ask to do, what type of a project it is. And of course, at that time, I'm sure they'll be monitoring these wells again to get an idea of what the effect is.
Just looking to contextualize what 20 feet means?
Oh, yeah, is it significant or not? Yeah.
We have public water supply wells that are permitted by the DEC that had offsite impacts in the range of 20 feet. But it depends on the well depth and what Bob had indicated earlier about interpreting the hydrograph of a monitoring well to determine the fluctuation from use and so on and so forth. Depth of well, pump setting, it gets a little complicated, but that, that is all reviewed in making a determination.
Other comments from the board? I think right now, if you have any other questions for Tom, you're free to sit down.
Driving back to the Cape.
Take the lead.
Pretty much.
Do you want to talk part five, on the part nine you also had?
Right now, we're just waiting for them to get back to the original analysis so then they can do another revised EAF. I'm not sure if there's any additional comments from the program.
Where do we stand with the traffic study?
Okay, so-
Driveway, the width of the property, and proximity to, to other driveways?
I can provide it in a summary. So in, I believe it was 2022, the applicant performed a, identified preliminary traffic study. John Cannon reviewed that as if it was attached to the part three, because that was the latest study that we had. He had some comments. The driveway is permitted by the DOT, so they're going to have to satisfy the DOT in that regard. John also did some comments about turning radius and things like that, which I think are fairly straightforward for the applicant. I don't think you take any exception to any of those items. So the biggest item really for the applicant is, John spoke about fair share costs. They have an impact. So that would be processed in your normal manner, and that is that he would include a condition where they have to go to the town board for developers' agreement. Doesn't sound like that they are taking an objection with that.
How does that work, Sean? I mean, you know, there's a fair share. So each of the projects going down 17N is kicking in a certain amount of money towards the improvements. This one happens to be the first one being built. Obviously, they're not paying for the whole improvement in that area. Is, is the town paid for and is bonded against, back against that money? Or how does that work if they're not all being built at the same time?
Correct. It can be handled in a number of different ways. The town could take, you know, move forward faster with that and implement the project. You may see that instances where it's town road. This is not town road.
State road.
It's a state road. So likely what would happen is a large user who comes in would be responsible for a lot of those improvements, and this would help offset some of those improvements.
But until, until one of those larger ones down heading west, further down 17N comes in, say this one's coming in now, so would the improvement, the supposed left turning lane into the property off of 17N, that wouldn't be built now until some future project is built that could help support the cost of it?
That's right. It would not be built until there's another project that helps it grow. So they, they have an impact, but it's a smaller impact in terms of the overall intersection capacity or your case, the left turn. So-
So would that, would that money escrow?
We don't know actually how the town handles that money.
We've been working with John Cannon to figure out when a project comes in, basically the percentage of their impact. I'll call it, for lack of a better phrase, and they would be contributing that percentage. And then, but we haven't finalized actually any of those developers' agreement. There is, the first developers' agreement in connection with fair share agreement is supposed to be submitted, I think, within the week. Okay, fine, next week. I'll typically finalize that and get the process in place because all the others are going to fall in line after that.
So when you're looking at fair share, you're looking at the overall improvements that have been made on the entire stretch due to all these developments that are being proposed? And then, at that point, then their particular percentage of it?
Yes.
Will be that. So they all have to be analyzed upfront, is what you're trying to say?
Yeah.
Okay.
Who makes the determination when the road, when the road improvements are going to take place or be warranted to DOT?
Yes.
Where is it?
Where is it? Escrow's on there? John Cannon is reporting. He came up with different numbers as far as the trip generation, in and out. Where do we stand on that? I mean, part three had one set of numbers and-
Unless I misunderstood the applicant, I think they're willing to accept John Cannon's numbers.
Okay.
We'll, we'll double check it, but yes, if, if they're accurate, we will certainly cut them, yeah.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay, so at this point, you've, you've mentioned as far as the view.
Yes, I think that right now, the applicant is going to put together where he thinks that the views should be taken from for visual analysis on this, come back to you with that before he actually goes out and does the analysis, and then we'll come back after that with amended part three.
Do you have any questions for us, Mike?
No, I think that covers everything. I think our biggest issue was the water situation. I think we've got that behind us now, so now we, we-
Details at this point on that.
That's, yes, correct, agreed. And we'll, we'll continue to provide the documentation to the board for the part three. We'll work with-
With, with the leaf on, leaf off?
We'll do the best we can, yes.
The best we can, because there's a lot of deciduous trees.
If we hustle right now, we might still get some leaf off, so.
Yeah.
Did we determine where we want those from, or?
He's gonna, he's gonna provide them as a-
Propose the locations that would most likely be of concern. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your time, Tim.
Next item on the agenda, Student Bus Company Incorporated, 20-2-6. You have an application for a site plan approval for a bus terminal on 3.4 plus or minus acres along Industrial Drive, CO zone, ACQ 3 overlay. And we're here tonight to discuss revised plans.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Soriano from Home County Engineering. With me this evening, I have Matt Cole, who's the vice president of Student Bus, and the applicant for the project. Also very cool, he's with Crosscut Construction, and John Zeller is a part of that team. I'm just going to go through, reintroduce the project to the board, kind of explain the previous meeting, how we got to this point, what we've supplied to you, just a general reintroduction. I'll let these guys, if they have anything else they want to add, just on the initial, and then we'll get into a more detailed discussion.
Thanks.
So just remind the board that this application is for Student Bus, who has some local contracts with some areas of school districts. And they're looking to set up shop at this location on 10 Industrial Drive as a school bus terminal and operations center. This property is one property in the area of a commercial industrial park. Just to the south is the Village of Florida, and just to the north is Reservoir Road. Industrial Drive gets access up in New York State Route 17, B, or A, excuse me. It's located in a commercial slash office mixed-use district, and the project is 3.4 acres in total. However, the application is now revised a little bit based on some of the feedback we had at the last meeting. It's a, we're now including in this application a lotline revision, a lotline change. So this is 12 Industrial Drive, this is 10 Industrial Drive, and we're proposing a 100-foot offset off of this sideline, which will reduce their property down to two and a half acres from 3.4. We originally, before the board on February 6th, that was just an official reason.
Remind me exactly what you're doing there?
So-
That, that portion, that strip of land is going to the adjacent?
That's going to 12.
It's going to 12, okay. So we're eliminating the left?
Yeah, that'll become part of this lot.
Yeah, okay.
In February, we gave our initial presentation. We committed secret. At that meeting, we received your technical review from your engineer, and then obviously some feedback, some comments from the board. So since that time, we have been, you know, working, us as a group, as a team, and working really hard to try to resolve any of those outstanding comments, those issues, get as much information back to board as possible, and that's why we are here today. The site plan has been revised. We've provided a landscaping plan, a lotline, lotline change plan. We have performed a septic evaluation. We've had continuous correspondence back, communication outside, back and forth with the health department discussing our situation with the well. We have retained traffic consultant. We're expecting to have that report soon, which we just don't have yet. And I believe Matt also provided a, a updated enhanced project narrative. It's really just a quick, quick introduction. I don't know if you guys have anything else to add initially. So I'll turn back over to the board, and I'm sure we can get into some of the finer stuff.
Thanks. Sean?
Mr. Chairman, so again, this is amended site plan approval. I informed from warehouse to bus dispatch. At your February 6th meeting, you declared your intent and you classified this as unlisted secret action. As you discussed, Mr. Chairman, they have now added a lotline adjustment component to this application, whereby they're going to take approximately one acre and shift it on to the neighboring parcel. That was because that area in that strip, they're currently utilizing that for contractors' boards, and which is not permitted right now, hasn't been approved, and it's not part of their application. They don't want that to be part of their application, so they're going to shift it over. This does require a public hearing. I don't know if the board is in a position this evening to make that decision. The only thing that I would recommend is we are leaning towards a public hearing. I would say that you would consider getting a traffic study that you just heard about, of course, so the public has an opportunity to review that and comment on that in the hearing. I did have a question for the building inspector in my memo. This is a gravel site. Not all gravel sites are the same in terms of imperviousness and a lot of water to pass through them. So the town code does have a definition for impervious surfaces. So I'd ask the building inspector to weigh in, and I don't want to put him on the spot here, I want the inspector to weigh in right now, but to look at that site and make a determination whether that should be considered impervious surface or not. And there are some outstanding questions relative to parking in front of the building. You know, your code typically requires parking towards the back, but to the sides of buildings. I did have some further questions with the applicant in terms of how they're going to utilize parking relative to buses and passenger vehicles for employees. They discussed a jockeying plan with you. When I further reviewed the plan, it looks like some buses there are going to have some difficulty coming out of their stalls, particularly bus parking spots 6, 17 through 20, and 31 through 36. It just doesn't look like there's enough area. So we had asked the applicant for a turning plan. The last thing I had was just a public water supply. I don't know if the applicant had a chance to contact department help yet.
Thank you. I'm good. Where'd you go back to? Oh, there you are. Sorry. My reading glasses. Yes. Two questions. The water line that's on the west side of the property, that's, I believe, the county water line that passes through there?
That's my understanding, yeah.
Is, is there a setback on that, or do you think that the county has over that portion?
There's, there's nothing, at least in, in the property deed that we are aware of that's, that's a restriction that we're able to find. But that's something that we're trying to investigate with, like, the county, the county itself, county surveyor. See if they, they have any other information on that, see if there's actually like specifically a deed filed.
Because that, that could impact your site plan as far as the bus storage on that side of the water.
Mr. Chairman, could I just add something on that, that point?
Please.
This is adjacent to a farm. Under the GML law, this will have to be referred to the county, because already has not been.
It has been.
It has been. We're hoping that the county has any issues with the-
They would raise that issue as well.
Part of their review.
Not sure the planning department, though, would be aware of any restrictions for water line. So I think you should still follow up and get your mind out.
Then the other question I had, we have the proposed location for the diesel tank and 150-gallon gasoline tank. Where is the fill station actually going to be located as far as maneuvering the buses through the property? What, is it at the tank? Because it's in, it doesn't seem like there'll be a traffic flow, or is it- Because it doesn't seem like there'll be a traffic flow, or is it near the building? Where do you have that proposed?
I'm gonna defer to Matt on this one.
Okay.
Yeah, at this point, for full transparency, probably with where the well is going, we'll have to move that towards one of the sides of the building, or to another spot that ends up making sense, we're gonna revisit that.
Move what?
The tanks.
Move the tanks. But the tanks will be in the vicinity of where the fill would actually take place, the fill station?
Yes.
To be together?
Yeah, they're usually mounted onto the tanks.
So, you'd have to be tucked in the very back of the parcel?
Correct.
Okay.
Lee, just on a topic, if I could, Chapter 23 of the FAR Code touches on that very topic, the tables, separation distances, that might guide you for your proposed locations of these banks and stuff.
Okay. How there, which one was that again?
Chapter 23 of the FAR Code.
Comments from the board?
I have a question about the trips per day with the buses. When the bus drivers come in in the morning and pick up the bus, leave their personal vehicle, do they keep the bus all day and bring it back at the end of the day, or they, after the first run, they bring it back, and then they do that again for the afternoon run?
A very limited scope, stay out for midday work, CTEC, BOCSY's type of stuff, but most of them would come back.
So, you have like, you'll say two transfers, two switchovers?
Maybe five, something like that. Or two, I'm sorry, two in-outs, you're saying?
Two shit, yeah, morning in and out, and the afternoon in and out, except for the small group that you mentioned.
Yes, sir.
How would it work as far as student programs in the evening, using the buses? Do you transport the children to any kind of activities in the evening with the buses?
The only thing we currently have, we do one late bus for kids that are in the chess club or something like that. It's one, it's done at 4:30, so, you know, we don't, once in a while, a later sports trip, but it's not really a big part of what we do, no weddings or extracurriculars.
Will they come back to the properties? Anyone there to meet the buses, or they just at that point just drop the bus and take their vehicle home?
It depends, usually someone's there. We try and keep you on a limited basis if somebody is coming back from, you know, a late trip, but...
Thank you.
I got a question, just wanna make sure I understand, someone comes and does a morning shift, takes a bus out, they put their car in the parking spot, right, to go, and they come back, and then the same driver may have an afternoon run, right? Does that same driver hang out in the building sometimes, or they always leave?
Really always leave, that's one of the few benefits of school bus company, the midday's quiet, they're gone, and there's not much happening, so...
They always leave the premise.
Yeah.
Does each driver have the same bus all the time, or...
For the most part, we do preventative maintenance and DOT inspections on the vehicles, that sort of thing, but we try for everyone's benefit to keep it the same as much as we can.
So, bus number one goes out first, then bus number two, bus number three?
Yes.
So, you have it in order as to how they're gonna come out and go back in?
Right, so in...
Because they look awful tight when I went to see that, and I don't want to seem clipped, or stupid or nasty, but I took my son's old Matchbox toys, and I looked at that area, first I drove by it, and then I came back, and I tried to put everything to scale, and I took all these little Matchbox all over, and I had a damn hard time trying to get that bus back into that spot with the car there, especially if it was a pickup truck, or a big SUV or something, trying to get this bus to back up, to get it out, and get the next one in, it just seemed difficult to me, because it's not a big lot.
So, we're gonna, you know, that's something that your engineer has also mentioned, I appreciate the comment, we're gonna perform a turning analysis and hearing, to investigate this further than we already have.
Yeah, we have some buffer in there, so, you know, it may have, the first few vehicles leave and have a spot for those first five cars, if that makes sense, and then it's one-to-one from there, something like that, and just for frame of reference, like, if you've driven a JFK, you've seen some of the bus yards down there where they're eight or nine deep stacked, so we do have the ability, because the routes have a lot of regularity, we have like a whiteboard in some of our yards where we go, you know, if anyone's changing for tomorrow for some reason, here's how we're parking the buses at night, we have guys that go out, shift them at four o'clock, and make sure they're all in the right order, so they're pulling out in line in the morning, but it is a fair point, for sure.
So, bus number three may get switched with bus number 22, or whatever, depending on...
They don't have assigned spots, but it's tied to a route each vehicle, so you'd say, you know, Route 4 is the first one out every morning, it gets those kids going to Westchester, and so whichever bus is doing Route 4 tomorrow, we'll put on the whiteboard and put it in Spot 1.
If the bus doesn't start, we have to do that.
And we're all in trouble.
Anthony, you have alongside buses 1 through 5, parking right behind them, is a broken solid line, bold line between that and the borders that protect the septic. That solid line originates at Industrial Drive and goes all the way back to parking stall number 12.
This line right here?
Yeah, it's a fold.
So, that...
What is that?
That is the existing edge of gravel.
Okay, edge of gravel. That should be noted on there.
We do have it noted over here, but it's hard, yeah, it is difficult, there's a lot of line work on here, and that is also something your engineer had mentioned, is maybe separating out some of this information into two maps, to make a little more rebuild.
Good, thank you.
So, what's the building being used for?
What will be used for?
Yeah.
I'm the owner, so, I'm Johnny Lee, okay, so, just to address a couple of things that you've already talked about, I'll answer your question first, then I want to draw back to some things we've already talked about, just briefly. The building, number one, will be a maintenance facility, okay, which we currently do not have, okay, which will enable us to be a much more efficient operation for the district. We've already gotten, I believe, approval to do the maintenance aspect of it. The rest of the building is probably, it's larger than we normally would need for an operation of this size, but it will house the offices for the dispatcher and manager, safety person, okay, and then it will have a driver's room, okay, where they come in and they pick up their keys, check in each morning. The drivers generally are in the yard about 10 minutes before they get to their bus and do their pre-trip, and then go out on the road. It's probably two times at least the size of the building we would normally need to do this operation, but any port in a storm right now, because that was what's available, and it's in an area that is usually industrial, in fact, I want to say going back, you know, maybe 10 years ago, there was actually a bus site on the same location, I think down the street, opposite side of the road, so the location itself kind of fits what you would normally see for a school bus operation. There aren't too many bells and whistles of what you need within a building, you just need a dispatcher, you need a driver's area for them to come in and do their thing, put their stuff in, a manager on site, whatever, and a safety person, okay? So, we have a lot of space there that we normally would use, it's just...
So, you're gonna maintain the buses inside the building?
We do maintain.
Where would they enter the building?
There's a bay door.
There's a bay door there.
Where, okay, where is it? Is it back?
There's two bay doors, there's one in the front of the building right here, and there's also one at the rear of the building right here.
Where are you parking buses?
There's nothing existing in the back, Anthony, just the one...
Not for service?
Not for, oh, for service.
Yeah, okay. So, it would just be entered from the front, from the industrial...
Correct. Correct. In terms of the tightness that you have referred to and whatever, I mean, I've been doing this for about 44 years, this lot is actually bigger than most lots that we've had to operate in over the years. I know that sounds absurd perhaps, but Matt made a good point, if you ever drive into New York City, as a, for instance, where land is at a premium, you will see about six inches of space between buses, okay, so this is, this is actually like a walk in the park, so to speak, so when you're parking vehicles and doing things like that, it's kind of commonplace in our industry to have that. You know, our biggest concern, of course, was to try to make sure that we had fire lane, so that the fire people could come through and get around the building in any type there might be a thing, but in general, there's, you know, there's plenty of room for maneuverability in what we normally operate. So, we do have, I think, about five spots that are open before, where the first five drivers come in, we don't have to have a, they're not taking a, they're not putting their car into a bus spot, they're, they're open spots, so we have five, and then after that, five vehicles are already out of the yard, the sixth driver comes in, there's five spots already for them to put their car in, that the bus that they're gonna use isn't jockeyed out, and it works in reverse when they come back through. So, at night, we literally know what the next day is, we have an assigned person who goes out and makes sure that each vehicle that has to go by our dismissal time, or leave the yard time, are in the spots that are appropriate. Some days, the school's out, they're out for a holiday, they're out for teachers' convention, whatever else it might be, and that board gets amended, so that those buses are put into the appropriate spot. The bus that isn't going out isn't in the one spot anymore, it's in a spot where it doesn't encumber the rest of the operation in terms of its timeliness.
So, that's what you use the other parking spots for? Eight, nine, and 12 spots?
Right. We try to, yeah, we don't always have that luxury, by the way, we've been in a one-for-one situation many times, okay, where literally the driver comes in, somebody pulls the bus out onto the street, driver does their pre-trip, and then they move out, and we operate that way, we've done that in several operations over the years, this is, as I say, is somewhat of a luxury, that we have five spots available to be able to start that process without having to do that.
Three questions for you.
Sure.
First off, do the drivers themselves pull the vehicles into the slots, where they bring the bus back in, or is somebody on site parked them?
No, the drivers generally come back in, and they're able to park the vehicles, they, you know, they're going through all kinds of testing and driver skills and whatever else it is, we don't see anything here that's, and basically what it is, is you fill the first available spot deepest, so that there isn't really jockeying, you pull right behind the one that's taking the furthest spot out.
Do they pull in or back into the stalls?
They usually pull in, now, there's some spots there where you see along the back of the building where they'll, where they'll back in, but what happens is, that first driver takes the furthest-most spot where there's no buses around them, so when they go to back into their spot, it's not like they have to wedge in between something, there's open spaces all the way to one side of it, okay, then the next driver only has to worry about that same thing going down.
Next question. Forgot my third one. The buses, do they need to have any kind of like block heaters at the diesel, or anything like that in the winter?
No.
So, there's no...
No, never used them.
Okay, and the third question, which just came back. Washing down the buses, I mean, in our water analysis, we said we're using 420 gallons a day based on the 40 people that would be in and out, is there any plans to use the water for washing buses well, or are they all bused, washed off-site?
We spoke to it a little bit last time, generally it's off-site, in cases, I don't know what's admissible, but where we have washed on-site, there are companies in the area that'll tanker in their own water, and it's biodegradable soaps and that sort of thing that's available, but we've generally, like, had them at a central one of our sites, and been able to do it.
So, there's no intention of using your well for that purpose?
No.
How about snow removal from the top of the buses? Do you have a mechanism, where would that be, so you run it through and...
Manual system, it's called a roof rake. I was out there a little months ago at 4:00 AM doing it.
Are you serious, the drivers get up there?
Oh, yeah, we have a crew, it's like, you know, for this, it would be five guys in the shop, come in, they'll nose them out of the spots, just enough for the plow truck to go by, then hit the front when they back back over it, and pulling snow all the while. It's a fun experience.
If you could just indicate on the site plan, where the, you're gonna store the snow, you're plowing from the lot, and it comes off the buses?
Yeah, we've...
We've had times, we've actually had to have the snow removed, okay? If you have a heavy enough snow, you might not have that buffer to be able to do, now there's, you know, there's a lot of room behind us, it might be on a hill and whatever else it is, but for the most part, we're able to...
Build cart them out in dumpsters.
If we have to.
Bring it to approved site.
With respect to the traffic study? Typically, you know, we get these traffic studies to talk about, you know, peak hours and things like that, sounds like you're gonna be moving in flights a little bit, if you could just make sure that the traffic study reflects...
Yeah.
...the realities of the way you work, rather than just peak hour, that'd be great.
Yeah, so there's, just to speak to it for a second, so you have a little bit of an understanding of how it generally works, there's usually a window between, let's use 6:15, first bus will pull out, and then the last bus, depending on the schedules, might pull out at, say, 7:30, there might be an hour and 15-minute window, both morning and afternoon, 1:45 in the afternoon, the last bus might leave the yard at 2:30, they also come back in very staggered fashion, I mean, it's rare that you have two buses come in at the same time, even buses that are going to the same schools, okay, because they load and unload in fashions, the routes are longer or shorter depending on the school district's needs, so, to that effect, it's very rare that you have a condensed traffic of school buses coming into any area at the same time, okay?
That's helpful, I appreciate it, if that's, you know, reflected in the study, if that's the reality that's reflected in the study, that's why I, I think we're all mindful of, you know, people complaining about a line of buses either coming into or getting out of, I think it's helpful for us to just understand the context, but thank you for that.
One last question, any of this design, are you incorporating anything for future electric buses going down the road?
We spoke to that at the last meeting a little bit, we don't see it coming, we don't have it in any of our current contracts, and they're 10 years out still.
To that, because it's something that tends to creep into conversations, electric buses and so forth, we operate, the infrastructure really isn't there, I think you probably see that sometimes in just car, electric cars, and the towns don't have the infrastructure in place yet, and whatever, but in the school bus thing, it's probably even more acute. As I say, Rockland County, there's two, we have two on the same street, okay, and ours in Rockland County has basically told us, we can't even accommodate you two at the same time right now, we wouldn't be able to do that because of the drain, and in that particular area, there's probably another 200, 300 school buses in that small condensed area that would have to be accommodated as well. The other part is, is that the initial cost is about four times a regular school bus, you know, to purchase one, so, you know, it's still in a prohibitive phase. Anecdotally, New York City, of course, which premium on space, they went out for, they went out for garbage trucks, electric garbage trucks contracts, and after making the purchase, or at least signing the purchase, they remembered that the garbage trucks also act as snowplows, okay, and that, you know, the buses had to come, the garbage trucks had to come back in and be re-electrified, okay, unfortunately, they also needed to be on the road plowing the roads, so that contract had to be rescinded because the accommodation of the power that would be needed to operate those things for eight, 10, 12 hours just wasn't there. So, I'm making that point only because although there's a lot of discussion, and some places have moved minimally towards some electric vehicles, there are so many hoops that have yet to be, you know, worked through, and so many problems that it's, it's hard to imagine it's gonna happen on the timeframe they originally had, and I think his 10-year projections probably is close to anything is probably about right.
Unless we guys move up and get better energy storage facilities approved and up there.
It's a lot.
No, 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 you're on the bus time.
I had to get a little shot in there.
I had to get a little shot in there.
Other comments, other concerns?
It's all I got.
Yeah?
Yeah, uh, just a couple of questions. On the diesel tank, uh, or the, or the gas tank too, love to see some kind of containment that if they leak, that, that be contained. I assume you ain't gonna buy the kind of a tank that we get there?
Yeah, it's always double walled and concrete pads. Is there anything else that you typically...
Sometimes we get within a tank, like another tank within a tank, so it'll, it'll, it'll stay there. And then certainly, uh, the other idea that you just kind of mentioned is, uh, the concrete for when you refuel. So if there's a spill right there, it'll hit the concrete, it's gonna go right in the ground. Uh, thank you. I think the location of the service, I think...
Yes, it is.
We talked about the snow, buffer snow, and I think we took care of that. I think the entrance and the exit, I think maybe it would be better to have a little bit side, larger sized, uh, paving there. I know like when we do construction sites, I think it's generally fifty foot minimum. Uh, sort of all the dirt and the dust can come off prior to getting on the road. Whatever that is, I think, is it fifty foot?
Well, that's reverse, usually have stone pavement. Okay, this is a paved area. The hobby superintendent requested this. Uh, we could send it to him to see if this is an adequate size.
If he, if he's happy with twenty foot, great, otherwise, uh, good. Okay, when I look at the site, I, I was trying to figure out the parking spaces or stalls versus the vehicles out there. And I think it's just a, a design or a drawing issue because the number of vehicles doesn't match up to parking stalls. Uh, and it goes up and downs, you have four, you have, where you have six parking stalls, you have four, five buses. Where you have eight parking stalls, you have six buses. But it's just that could jive, so it's...
We're gonna...
Match it up?
We're gonna put all that information on two maps.
Good.
Trying to make it easy.
And the other thing, uh, we talked about the area of the building, because I think that this may address some of your parking issues. In the past, we looked at a, uh, concrete company. Uh, and there, they were talking about possibly parking vehicles within the garage or within the service area. And certainly, if you have extra buses or whatever, they're not, not gonna go out every day. I think you said you don't, all of them don't go every day. Then certainly, they could be parked in there, they have a lot more spaces to start out, they're empty for the drivers otherwise.
You know, uh, where we are today is that we are not the owner of that building. Okay, so, uh, to that effect, he has control over what that is. And I think that, you know, we've tried to make the plan. I mean, we operate, uh, many more vehicles in this area than we're asking for on this particular site. We're, we're, we tried to keep the scope of what we're trying to do on this site so that it wasn't overwhelming to both the area, okay, and the lot itself. We really don't have the latitude to, um, accommodate what you're doing, it's...
So look at the shop.
Yeah, the, the shop, you know, let's just use the shop as an example.
That's what I think about.
Okay, it, it's a fair question, and, you know, could, could you fit two or three buses inside there? You, you probably could, Gary, you might be able to speak to that. You have a better understanding of the dimensions in there, but certainly a couple.
Yeah, I, I wasn't thinking a whole bunch, I was really thinking, make a handful at the most.
Okay, I, I don't think you could do much more than two or three.
I think you could certainly get two full buses, full-size buses in there, and a van.
And we've done that.
Simultaneous.
I think it may help. Uh, the last question really went to, goes to the septic system testing, Sean. Is that acceptable at this time of year? And is any leaking gonna show up otherwise? Because if the ground's still frozen, I don't think any...
The ground's not frozen.
I'm not sure how it's falling out, it was frozen on, on March fourth.
Generally, I'm okay with doing septic tests depending on the volume that goes through and time of year. In terms of the time of year, there can be instances where you won't get break-through. But in this particular instance, and when they did it on March fourth, I'm pretty sure, because I was working on a living water tank at the time, I knew that the ground was not frozen.
I just hope the forms still, we have frozen ground.
Yeah, but keep in mind, the adjuvant system is down, what, two feet? And if the max, if it's not down four, four feet, great.
We, uh, and we, we also inspected the septic tanks, so we excavated and not in the septic flue field area, but by the tank area, and that was not frozen.
But a lot of times, you know, if you, it makes sense waste water and whatnot, you will, it gets warm, right? You're not using frozen water.
Sure, and it depends to not be frozen as much, right, right? I understand that. Thank you.
Do you have any other questions for us?
There was, uh, ob- obviously, I, I think we've made this aware. We have, we have a schedule that we are trying to work toward, and you people have given us some really good direction in terms of trying to be prepared so that we have the opportunity within each meeting to, to meet what's a fairly stiff deadline for us down the road. I do wanna say that, um, you know, we're working very hard to do that. We've, uh, we've, we've met, uh, with the Department of Health. We've had discussions with the Department of Health, I think you would be aware of that. And, uh, you know, we're, we're working toward, uh, trying to get language in place, uh, that would be amenable to both the town and the Department of Health. So, uh, when I say we're at their mercy, I don't mean that in a negative sense, because they've been very amenable to having discussion and helping us try to draw some kind of common ground so that we can move forward with this project in a timely fashion. The rest of it falls in the direction of when these, uh, when these meetings occur, which are already scheduled out, and when the town, uh, what's the, the public hearing? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm at that sixty-six age where I'm losing my mind.
As Sean had mentioned, you know, the public hearing, we schedule, first we need to have the traffic study. So that, that aspect of it is...
I was gonna say, this is a great lead-in to everything I was gonna say.
Oh, the biobies.
Well, thank you for that lead-in. So, as you know, the applicant needs a public hearing. The applicant also needs to complete seeker. Thirty days hasn't passed yet from the notice of lead agency. That was based upon when it came in and when it was sent. So what I would offer as a suggestion to the planning board, uh, two things. The first is, you could schedule the public hearing for your meeting on the seventeenth of April, subject to receipt of the traffic study by the third of April. But that have the application also on for your February, February, now we're going backwards. For your April third meeting to go over the part two. You can, um, assume lead agency status, review the part two, and go from there. They should've, at that point, already had the traffic in. I think they've submitted most other items, I just haven't...
I think we, we're planning to have our traffic study completed by next week.
They did the counts yesterday.
This is the April third, will not be issued.
No, sorry.
I think we'll, we'll, we'll push to make sure that we have that place, time for you people to look at it and comment. And, um, I think it was you that asked that we have some type of acknowledgement of how we come out and when we come back, and the spacing of that, so we'll make sure that we're, uh, we've addressed that for you.
And there's a few other issues that are outlined, um, in Sean's memo regarding parking that I know Frank and I are taking a look at and working on, and John DeCalle's been in touch with us as well about that. So hopefully, we can have those resolved and worked through by your April third meeting, when we could do seeker, and then if you want to, you just schedule that public hearing. Just trying to take into account the applicant's timeline.
We appreciate that, thank you.
Could I have a motion to, uh, set the public hearing tentatively for April seventeenth, assuming all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed before that? Eric, second by?
I'll second.
Diana, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you all, appreciate.
Good night.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Edward J. Leppka, Drive, Winter House Offsite Improvements, twenty dash one dash one forty-nine. You have an application for amended site plan for modification of an existing parking lot in thirteen point nine plus or minus acres in the CO zone, AQ three-stream corridor, and water supply leadership employees. We're here this evening for an initial presentation and to begin the seeker process.
Uh, good evening, Ross Wingpits, Engineering and Surveying Properties. I'm here with Eric Mulredd representing, uh, the owner and applicant. This is a small part of a larger project in the village. Um, there's a small warehouse here at the end of Leppka Lane, a property owned by the applicant that is, uh, being proposed and reviewed by the town, the town of the village. The village was lead agency, they circulated to the town, um, and they've assumed lead agency status as of January. What we're, part of that is, they've asked us to look at improving the traffic flow in this area of Remi Plaza Drive, so, um, Al's building here with the last tur, this was the gym. And actually, there was some improvements done here as part of the forty thousand square foot building we approved through the town back about ten, twelve years ago. Uh, so I think, to Sean's point, some of these parking spots have already been, had already been removed as part of that application. But what we're trying to do here is further improve that traffic flow pattern by curbing and channelizing, um, the traffic that will go to the properties in the rear, creating some islands, um, and then restriping this area. This is the town-village line. So most of this improvement is in the, in the village, a couple islands, restriping, um, handicaps, so forth, is in, under the town. Uh, we think it's a big improvement. It was a request of the village that we look at doing that.
Ross, could you do me a favor?
Yeah.
Uh, coming out of the, uh, village parcel, can you follow that left curb line, the sideline of the road?
Here?
No. On the T right there, going off from there to the left. How, where's the actual edge of the road?
So this is the, the road, the proposed road will be right through there.
That's, that's the high end, but what about the low end? I'm, I'm still confused with the curving and the centerline strike in the road.
The two arrows are, are the existing arrows that were in the pavement. So the new curb, this is the curb line here, Lee?
Yeah.
And then that is the edge of pavement right there. And these dashed spots are landbank parking in the village. I gotta mark it, wait. So this would be our new curb line here, an edge of pavement. Right here, here. This is kind of the main through.
Okay.
You see that?
Yep, so the, the double line between the two arrows is the centerline between the two lanes of traffic.
Is the old centerline, is the existing centerline, probably should be faded back a little more, yeah.
Okay.
So again, trying to channelize that and get this parking interaction, uh, away from the through lane so that they would have defined entrances and exits into that parking area. So we think it's an improvement to the traffic flow in that area. Again, so here's a vill, here's a town-village line. Um, just the, a couple of these islands, pieces of islands that are actually in the town. I think we did the same thing when we did the other project in the back. We had to go to the village for some of the improvements we had done here for the town, in part of the town application. We have, Sean's comments, be glad to answer anything.
Couple of quick items for the board's information. So I think this is amended site plan approvals and some modifying this parking lot and changing the site circulation a little bit. We'll give you the background in terms of what's going on in the village. So I would recommend that you confirm with Kelly that the original recreational use of the building required special permit. That use isn't changing, so I think it's just amended site plan approval, can be processed under those parameters of the code.
Confirmed.
Confirmed, okay.
It, it's also confirmed that it's minor, a public hearing's in your discretion. However, Grace has to mail out notices to the county ERB and farm operators.
That's confirming now.
Okay. We talked about the discrepancy in the parking counts. The code allows you, as you know, with Unipline, to bring non-conforming parking lots into compliance to the extent practical. However, the code actually also says, uh, when the site plan expansions for, site plan approvals for expansion or changes of use. Since this is neither an expansion or a change of use, I actually don't think that you have the ability to require them to comply with the current parking lot performance. They did...
Confirmed, but you just need to double-check with Frank.
They did, however, propose to add some green space. Uh, I had asked whether they could actually include some additional plantings as well, not just grass. So I don't know what the intention of green space was.
No, we say green space, the green space being where?
Within the curb island.
Yeah.
Right against the...
Yeah, the new curb islands right here. Here, and then this is all curb island here, that's the crease.
Uh, two other quick items. The intersection, although it's in the village somewhat, um, there is an unusual intersection on the right-hand side. Uh, I think in, in real life, it's actually striped, uh, that's not shown in the plan, but I think we just add that there so it's clear as to how the vehicles are moving through there. And then lastly, I just question whether there's any grading proposed or adding curbs? We don't wanna see any spot to get icing conditions or, or ponds or ponding or anything like that.
So, yeah, we took a look at that, there is a catch space in here. So I think it all flows, we may need to do a curb drop in here or something.
Would rather do that now as part of the design, rather than going back after you get a rainstorm and learn on the hard way.
And what you said as far as the landscaping on the curb islands, you referred to long ones as well on this southerly side of the parking lot?
Here?
Yeah. Is that gonna be in landscapes?
That's in the village. We'll look at, you know, providing some, I think it's a good idea to have a tree or two out here, we'll hopefully see what we can fit in. There are light poles here as well, so they're in that island. But again, I think it's an improvement over the sea of asphalt that's there now.
When the right-hand side shows existing curb, is that gonna be removed?
No.
Almost looks like it's right in the middle of the entrance.
Um, the traffic flow here, yeah, goes, most of the traffic flow is up and in here. So there would be a maneuver here. So you're worried about, guess cars exiting?
Yeah, it's a curb.
Yeah. Cause they exit to the lane here. We'll take a look.
I saw that bus talk earlier, it's actually...
I would ruin it to the curb.
I just drive around.
Ruin the whole front of my car, I mean, man.
The one that's not in the line, is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah, this one right here.
Oh, okay, I was talking about the ones here, the left, actually, it's two that are in the line. It's not the easiest site plan in the world to read.
Yeah.
It's a lot going on.
Other comments from the board?
Are those parking spots, um, the, the lightly dashed lines to the left, yeah?
There's a landbank parking in the village, yeah, for, as part of that site plan.
Yep.
So the number, the number of parking spaces for the, uh, buildings in the, in the town, we're gonna add the same amount at the end as...
Correct, that's our intent, just, just to keep it central, yeah.
The handicap parking spaces
Yeah.
probably should be moved. I think that most people use the entrance, uh, to the east.
This one?
Yeah. I think Eric, Eric can probably give you a better answer, but I think they really do use that one almost exclusively. So those should, should be moved there. Uh, another concern we, we had at the ERB was the new curbing there, uh, that Eric was kind of, look at that there. Uh, that's kind of right on the town-village line. Right now, it's, I think there's no curbing there, and I think people kind of just drive right through there. And I'm concerned, we were concerned about that being very obvious, that people are gonna see the curbing while they're driving down there. It's easy enough maybe during the summer, don't, except if you possibly have six or eight inches of snow, that curb may very well disappear. So the thought was maybe there should be some kind of signage there, and, you know, sometimes they have the arrows go right or go left. Uh, just that, that may be helpful there. And the same thing at the top of the, uh, at the T tur, T intersection otherwise.
Here?
When you're coming out of the village, yeah, maybe something there too to just indicate, don't try to drive over the curb. I've seen people do that in shopping centers, and it was really impressive, but it's not really good on parks.
They've been doing my partner.
And so the other thing, uh, thought, uh, they had was that maybe right at that intersection, there should be another, uh, light there, so that intersection is a bit up more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Neil. Other comments from the board?
So, as it turns out, I already did make that determination. It is a minor project. I just had to scroll down a little bit on my notes. So a public hearing is in your discretion. It does require GML referral in terms of seeker. They said, as you heard, that the builder in Florida is handling that right now. They're reviewing the expanded part three. However, I think right now you can think about whether or not you want to hold a public hearing.
We mean no seeker?
No, seeker being held by...
I thought it wasn't, but I thought that was sent.
Neil, do you feel there should be a public hearing?
No, I have no problem with this.
Sure.
No.
No.
No. I have a motion then to waive the requirement for a public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Neil, second?
I'll second.
A shame, if someone in favor said that?
Aye.
Against? Sorry, no public hearing.
So we'll take care of the GML referral. I reached out to Grace, she's just going to take care of the ag data mailings, and then if there's no public hearing, we'll take care of the mailings that are required because it's minor. And then we're really just waiting on you guys to complete seeker on the village.
So we're going to get seeker done and come back with your comments. Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Good night.
Next item on the agenda, Mulch Mart Express Incorporated, 12-1-29 and 30. We have an application for amended site plan for a retail facility on 4.7 plus or minus acres along New York State Route 17N, Fisher Lane, and HC and CO zones, AQ3 overlay. Prepare this evening for initial presentation and to commence the secret process. Welcome.
Welcome. I'm James Dillon, the surveyor on the project, and I'm representing Mulch Mart Enterprises, Inc. This is owned by Lou Adamus. This operation has started in, I think, 2011, and it's been operating right up till today. The town building inspector has found that we haven't gotten a site plan approval. This property is actually two pieces of property. Originally, this property was only Section 12, Block 1, Lot 30, which is shown on my map. Now it's 3.37 acres. That was the original site plan approval that got a conditional site plan approval. Four years or five years later, Mulch Mart acquired this 1.3 acre parcel behind this parcel, and he expanded his operation. What I've done here is I've given you an existing conditions map. These properties are in two different zones. The property in the front is in the HC zone, which is highway commercial. The rear property is CO, which is... So to get it right, commercial, office, mixed use. Basically, the two different zones don't affect any of the uses, and there's very little bulk regulations that are different. I can point them out in a little while. This property is also... Like, I'm going to call this a site center, I'm not sure what it is, but this is a commercial zone, CO. Everything across the street is CO, and the corner property up here is highway commercial. Everything along the road is highway commercial. My desire tonight is to try to identify if this plan that we have now needs any variances, or can it proceed as it is now. So, I mean, Sean has a lot of lists of things that we'll go through, but one of the main issues is, we're storing along the front of the road right here. Everybody that goes by 17N can see it, we're very close to the road. In the original site plan that was originally approved for this property, the survey went out to this dash line where you see deed line?
That's the centerline? Or not quite?
Well, it's not quite the centerline, but there was a... They made a survey map of the deed line, and they showed it, and they considered that that's the... That's where the property line is. It technically wasn't back then, but everybody agreed that you can store right up along, right up along the front, because the deed wasn't impacted. I think that the setbacks were probably still the same, and along the state highway in the HC zone, I believe it's 35 feet.
Wait, when you say everybody agrees they could store up front, what are you talking about? Because that's not shown on your 2011 approval.
Well, I didn't do the 2011 approval.
No.
And there's very little information on that approval.
It shows the storage there, not there.
You're right, but where's the property line?
According to this, in the road.
Right. So there's 30 feet back is the setback.
And you were supposed to dedicate the first point back to the town, or to the state. So...
I think the way the resolution was written, they said you had tried to dedicate it. In fact, honestly, that's not where the property line is. I've made a new survey.
Okay.
And so we can clarify it by my new survey. The real boundary is where I show it here, which is probably over 30 feet back. It's a minor metro.
The code is a probation against storage in the front side of your yards.
So I think that your question about variances, you need to get variances, because that wasn't...
Well, quite honestly, I have a note on it on my site plan. This is my site plan, and it puts zoning board of appeals, five, outdoor storage to be allowed in front and side. I acknowledge that, I put it right on the plan.
No, that's fine, you just asked if it needed to be...
Well, I'm telling you some of our arguments possibly that Lou has given me, I didn't make that site plan.
Okay.
He put the mulch right along the road. Nobody really ever complained.
Actually, they were...
I think he has a violation.
He's got violations.
That's why you're here. I think you've even said that the building department found it was a violation.
You're 100% right.
Okay.
But he did operate from 2011.
He had violations back in 2014, because he was here before this board and before the ZVA back before then, because I was here during then. And it's fine, you're here now.
I'm here to correct this.
That's what I'm trying to say.
That's what I'm... So that's why I said right on it. I think I need variances.
And I'm confirming.
Thank you.
All right.
So we had a work session meeting with Kelly, I think you were there, and Sean, and they wanted to really send me right to the zoning board of appeals. And I said, I'd really like to show this application to the board. I think it's... I think you should see it before I go to the zoning board of appeals. And that's why I'm going here. I mean, I think maybe we could go over everything else in Sean's letter in detail if you want to. I don't see a lot of other issues. For this plan.
The existing dwelling on that back portion?
Yes.
Was like, was like indeterminate as far as what it's going to be used for, whether it's going to be occupied or storage, whatever it might be. Where's the septic system for that on this lot?
For that house?
You're showing the well, but we're not seeing the septic.
Yeah, honestly, I don't know, and I think it's going to be a mute point, because I believe we're going to take it down.
Demo it? That age home?
That was somebody's home.
But it's a classic.
I don't know that it didn't fix the issue.
No, but somebody with some good money could maybe fix it up, who wanted to live there.
Next to the psychiatric center?
Yes. Well, they're moving the psych center over. It's going to be a new facility. The old psych center might become something like high-end condos, who knows?
I think he wants to buy it.
Yeah, with the paint it gives me here.
What I didn't show you, well, there was a little mix-up, and Sean brought it up, but I actually... The zones are very close. The zone for the highway commercial, I didn't put it on here, but on a town road, the setback is only 25 feet. I put the state road, I think, down there. I think I only showed the state road setback is 35 feet. And about 25 along the town. I have given a dedication, I showed a proposed dedication along Fisher Lane to clear up that first condition of the first approval in 2011. And that's basically it. We have... Before I can finalize exactly what we're going to do, we have to either get variances or revise our plan. Either one.
I mean, that's up to you. If you want to keep it this way, I think you need to apply for variances, or you could amend your plan to pull the...
Pull it back from the site.
Yeah, from the front and the side.
Well, I think the owner thinks because of this was where it is and with the setback, he believes that he was entitled to it. It's been there for 14, 15 years. It would be very detrimental to him to have to move this entire thing back off the road, so we would like to try to get a variance.
Then I say go for it.
Okay.
Be certain like him.
You want to go through Sean's comments?
Well, I would say if Sean has something substantive he wants to raise, we can talk about that at this point.
Yeah, the only... I have two things that are really kind of top incentive for you guys. So the first is that when they do go for the variance, I just want it understood that the first parcel is in the HC. In the HC, there's a very unique requirement that if you have parking in front of the building, which you are allowed one row of, which you have, you have to increase the setback. Yeah, I think it's increased it by 35 feet. So the variance that you will be seeking from the ZVA is going to be much more substantial than Sean's plan right now.
Honestly, Sean, I hate to disagree with you.
It's okay, then go on.
But I don't believe that's the case. I believe the front yard for our building here is the Fisher Lane.
That's not accurate.
No.
It's a corner lot, it has two front yards.
And it has two front yards?
Yeah, including 17. So you'd have to increase the 17 front yard by 30 or 35 feet by the code.
Okay. Well, I would be going for a variance because I'm like in double jeopardy. We have it to the side already of the Fisher Lane, and now we want it also another way to.
No, it's code definition of a corner lot. Doesn't get any more straightforward. The code definition of a corner lot is a lot farning on two streets.
No, I understand that.
And then the code says corner lot should have two front yards.
You defined it, but the corner lot definition doesn't have two side yards.
Yeah, it does.
This one doesn't.
Yeah, it does. You have no rear yards. You have a mistake on plan.
In this case, on this lot, because of the shape, it doesn't have the second side yard.
This is a front yard.
Yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, yeah, okay.
Fisher's a front yard, 17M is the yard, this is a side yard.
Yep.
There is no rear yard.
That's correct.
So we don't have two sides.
We agree.
It's allowed two fronts.
Yep. The two fronts is the key part.
The two fr... I understand.
Okay. Then the other thing I think that's important for the board is the outdoor storage. We've discussed a 2011 application. It's unknown whether that application was finalized, received conditional approval. I never saw a plan, I don't know if the chairman ever signed the plan, I don't know if the building department has a signed site plan. However, assuming that there was... That plan was finalized, the board at that time allowed for expansion of the outdoor storage from 10% allowed by code up to 20%, and it also made a finding that their screening was not necessary because the site was orderly and trackable. The app is asking you to go up to 33.6% of outdoor storage, and then you would still have to make another finding that the site currently, to go up to that other 33.6% without it being screened, is orderly and trackable.
I just want to interject one thing. What was required as well back then was the planting of a certain number of street trees along 17M as a condition of the resolution, and that was also not done.
It was attempted.
I mean, I drove by, and I didn't see them, so I might be missing them, but they should have been...
They're under the mulch.
Well, I looked before the mulch.
Kelly, I want to clarify that. Mr. Adamus did try to put those trees there.
Okay.
He went to the state. They said that there would be a traffic hazard for site distance. They disallowed them to do it.
Did they provide anything to him in writing regarding...
No, I mean, it's... I think it's a fact.
He could...
Maybe somebody could.
The problem is, if they did that, then he would have had to come back for an amended approval to change that, to remove that condition. The other thing is, he wouldn't have been planting it in the state's right of way, it would have been planted on his property, and he has the right to do...
35 foot.
Yeah, if it's that far back, it's not going to be interfering with any site distance. So at that time, if that's the case, and I'm not saying that it isn't, he should have returned to the planning board. So by not planting those, even if he tried, and they said no, he's in violation of that. So that being said, we're here to fix this. I just wanted to interject that from Sean.
He tried, I also... I wasn't there, he told me he tried. I know the state is not going to let you put anything along this ditch along.
Except for mulch. Except for mulch, right?
The mulch.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to put Frank on the spot, but I think he might have some comments as well, relative to the building code, that's important.
By all means, Frank.
Sure, so I went through the file as recently as this afternoon, and I've come through it before that. Not to really repeat a lot of the things that were being discussed, there's a few things that I want to just bring to the board's attention. The only site plan that I found that was approved by a planning board goes back to February 16th, 1989, and it was for a parking area, a rectangular shaped parking area towards the front of the parcel, along, parallel to 17M. So Sean had mentioned if we had a site plan, when this was in front of the board around 2014, we were saying, we don't have one. I'm just going to go through Sean's memo, I'm going to bounce around a little bit. Sean had wanted to do a weigh-in on a few things. We talked about corner lot, I do agree it's a corner lot. The gravel area, it's my interpretation that it is impervious. The dwelling on Fisher Lane, it could be a moot point because it was suggested maybe it's going to be demoed, but I would say that that's a pre-existing condition. The home was built in 1895.
Please, go on.
Yeah.
I'm thinking about it. It'll get more pictures in there.
I don't know how detailed the site plan is yet, but I would like to see delineate clearly the size of the piles, include the height, the length, the width, the separation between the piles for fire department access.
That's at maximum.
At maximum. That's an important tool for me and the building department to enforce the site plan. Again, the piles, the separation between the piles for fire department apparatus. One more page here, there's anything on it. Signs, signage, I'd like the planning board to review any proposed signage. There's no file, no permits on record for signage for this parcel, and from time to time, it still may be there, it is a digital sign. That wouldn't be compliant, I'm asking for that to be removed. That's all I have.
Thanks, Frank.
So this is on your agenda to... For the initial presentation and to commence seeker. The planning board can declare its intent to serve... The planning board can declare its intent to serve as lead agency with, it would be a coordinated review with the ZVA. But the mailings cannot be sent until a full EAF is provided. So we would need a full EAF on this, and then I can send them out and get that started. You can apply to the ZVA at the same time, uh, but seeker would be completed here.
Seeker has to be completed here before I can go, go to the zoning board, right?
No, you can, you can start.
Go, but I can't have a public hearing, huh? Or they can't make a determination?
They can't make a determination.
Yes.
But you can go forward with your presentation and your public hearing and everything.
Okay.
So that it won't slow you down.
Do you want a long form EAF?
Yes, please.
I do want a long.
Yeah. And the sooner you email it to me, the sooner, I email it to me, and the sooner, um, we can mail out the notices. And once I get that, I'll also do the GML referral. A public hearing is required, but obviously, I don't think it is ready for that yet. And that's all I've got. So we'll get the, the practice.
I have a motion to declare this board's intent to be lead agency.
And type it as unlisted.
As we put it all together, so type it as an unlisted action. Anybody?
I'll place a motion.
Diana, second line. Seamus, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Do I, do I need a motion or Kelly to go to the, the zoning board of appeals?
Nope, not here. You can just make an application whenever you're ready. And, uh, they're online, and if you have any questions, just send it to me.
Okay. So we'll be going to the zoning board of appeals, but we'll be coming back here also?
Yep.
Yes.
Do a tandem.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Have a good day, thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks.
Mr. Healy.
No, it's Mr. Healy. Second Healy, we're having a little. I said it's Mr. Healy, that's the second Healy, you said he's young.
Kelly, that's yours.
Yay, so, uh, next item on the agenda is the IWU S Chapter eighty D, solid management permit from the town board to the planning board. At your last meeting, I know some of you were not here, but at your last meeting, we went over a very detailed memo that I provided to the board about what the planning board's role is when it's reviewing this particular referral and this type of referral. Um, Neil's up here too, so he can tell you that the role of the planning board is different from the role of the ERB. He got his own separate length. So, what I did was I took the comments of the board that were here last time, and I put them into a draft letter that I sent to you on March twelfth for your review, and I didn't know if you had any comments, revisions, anything like that to the proposed.
Thought it was well prepared.
You sure there's no typo or is there anything?
I'm gonna put draft agenda in this letter somewhere, just.
I'm sure Sean's gonna say it's rather long.
Could've been said a lot faster. Well, I mean, if it's all good and nobody has any comments, you can make a motion to.
Let me ask you a question.
So slow.
Why, why is it addressed to the village hall?
Just to see if you were paying attention, right?
Okay, Dave, it's Lee.
It wasn't six pages, so I had to make a mistake on the first page, so that.
First page, second line.
I would, I honestly, when I did the envelope, I would've been like, gosh, shoot, this isn't there.
Thank you for that, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be okay if I flipped his chair a little.
Any other revisions?
I got a second for Jeremy.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, it sure, and it will.
How do we look?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay. Hope there's no comments, and we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Jeremy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Thanks. Alright, I will send that out, and I appreciate it.
Oh, Sean, now we're.
Yeah, I, I think it's a little less, uh, painless that you're next to me, and right now, uh, I see two applications. One is Gotham, which is previous Aurora Innovations, uh, they're on to reconfigure some lots. I believe it's a subsequent application, but I'm not positive because the applicant had two different options, which I'm concerned. The other is student bus, uh, this evening, you talked about part two. Um, and you've also heard, I think, from Mr. Chappelle, that he will be making an application, or is part of an application, for battery energy storage system.
For real?
Yeah, for real.
Yeah.
I thought you were not looking at battery storage.
Well, you have one, and that's something that we are going to discuss at your next meeting.
Where?
Yeah.
Uh, it's.
Like, here, where else are we gonna talk about?
Are you familiar with the ONR substation out by Hartley Road, it's right, right in that vicinity?
Sean, I also received, um, email from one for the woods subdivision.
Oh, that's the one in the village.
Yeah, so I did just want to hit, so I told him that most person would not agenda, because I'm dropping off.
For anyone that has a March Madness pool, Kansas just lost. I just got a notification.
I'll put battery storage for a minute.
Okay, Gotham, student bus, part two, and battery storage.
The battery storage will be coming in next week. Uh, they will, yeah, I just wanted to give you a heads up, uh, that it's coming in. It's a new, it's a different application than you're used to.
That's Tony's phone?
Yes.
Yes.
It may or may not be here on time.
Oh, okay.
So that's a question.
They, they don't think they'll be here for the four three, they think they're.
No.
They'll be here for the four seventeen?
Yeah. Sorry, I'm.
Any, any else from the board, or do we, do you have a motion to close the whole, uh, meeting?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion to close the meeting. By Neil, second line. Marty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?